Chairman of the Board. Kevin Curl, Laurel Regional Hospital Chapel.
Valerie Nicholas, Laurel City Council Wardling.
John Perry, Council President, St. Philip's Physical.
Louanne Crook, Assistant Chief of Mayor.
Kim Ral, Clerk to the City Council.
Fred Smalls, Council Member, Ward Two.
John Spearman, President of Laurel Regional Hospital.
I'm Peter Demek, Associate Pastor at Our Savior Lutheran Church Number 197.
Jeremy Tynister, Pastor of Covenant Presbyterian Church in Lurdenville.
Luke Beckford, Laurel Lake Christian Church.
I'm John O'Grady, pastor of Great Apostolic Church.
Robbie Norton, pastor of Great Apostolic Church.
Andrea Foster, pastor of United by Faith Christian Church.
Sheila McJiltern, Reverend St. Philip's Physical Church.
Mark Mylek, pastor of Resurrection Our Lord Catholic Church on Rocker Road.
Darren Terry, Senior Pastor of Great Apostolic Community Church, right next door.
Greg Strong, pastor of City of Zion Church.
I'm Sergeant Randolph Gurley, pastor of Tabernacle Church.
Chris McGowan, pastor of Lifehouse Church.
I'm Kevin McGowan, pastor of Bethany Community Church, and I lead the Laurel Clergy Association, so some of you that we haven't seen in a long time welcome.
Okay, let you guys introduce yourselves.
Hey, I'm Mr. Minister's Office.
Morning, I'm Pete Peringer, new to the city, but I'm the director of marketing, community outreach, and public engagement.
If you guys, if you want to get something to eat, you can sit down. Let me, if I could, since Ken and Senator are both up, I want to thank them for putting this together and making sure it happens, so again, thank you to Ken and Senator. I'm going to go over quickly and briefly some of the things that are going on in the city, a lot of it, there is some development things that are happening. I thought that was important, make sure you knew what is happening here in the city as your congregations grow, and I think it's good for you to understand what we're trying to do here in the city when we talk about economic development and other things. Does everybody hear me okay? Let me just say with the election that just occurred, whether you're Republican, Democrat, or Independent, you know, it really doesn't matter, it's about the people, as we always say here at City Hall. Take care of them, we would ask that you keep us, all elected officials, new and old, in your prayers, and give them wisdom and guidance, and there is a few that probably need more, and some, remember that. Please feel free to come up to the table, and if you want something to eat, absolutely. We are collecting food for Laurel's. We have been for about the last three weeks, four weeks, we put up places for people to drop off food. We saw the press release come out from Laurel where their food bank is very low. We've always been involved with working and assisting Laurel's. In fact, our police department will be working with them again, the delivery of food and packages that they do as well. Again, as you bring your congregations together, we'd ask that you remind them as well, and I know many of you are involved in Laurel's and participate, in fact, there wouldn't be in Laurel's if it wasn't for most of you in the audience. We're trying to do our part, and we'll continue to participate. They have their 5K turkey trot, I'd like to tell you that I'm going to run it, I'll walk it. They're getting my check, which is the important part. And that is on November the 22nd. The city does have a new spokesperson, you heard Pete introduce himself, Pete Peringer, I want to make sure everyone knows who Pete is. Pete is taking the city in a new direction, we talk about community outreach and involvement, and Pete has a lengthy resume. When we talk about outreach to the community, the spokesperson for the Prince George County Fire Department for many years, the Maryland State Police under Colonel Mitchell. His last employment before he came to Laurel was at the Washington District of Columbia, Secretary of State's office, and he was also with the District of Columbia Fire Department as well. So, if you follow Twitter or tweet, it's P.I.O.P., and I think they already got a nickname for him here at City Hall, don't they Pete?
Yes, sir.
What's your?
Tweety Teddy.
Tweety Teddy. I just found that out yesterday, so. I encourage you to talk with Pete, and he'll be making the rounds as well, and he's been a big asset so far. The city does have a program, Governor O'Malley last year started a program to allow state employees to provide four hours of volunteer service to nonprofits. We took that at the city level, we did it last year. We're again doing it this year for the month of November and December. Employees, we give them four hours of administrative leave, they can go out and work. We have several people, I think, work at Laurel's, others do many volunteer things throughout the year. But I thought it was a good program. Most know I'm a state employee, so that's, you know, where I got it from, and we've kind of hooked onto that, it worked out very well last year. We're going to again support that. That can't be done without the support of the mayor and the city council, so I want at least the councils members that are here at town to thank them for allowing us to do that, because that is a drain on city forces as well as payroll, but we think it's important in allowing them to do that. So again, take advantage if there's things that you may have, you can see Mr. Fundman or Mrs. Mills, and we'll pass that on to city employees as well, if you have projects. And that is all on website as well, the press release was done, I think, a day and a half or two days ago, so you'll see that on our website as well. Couple of things, we have done some annexation, we do not go after annexation, properties come into the city and ask, petition the city for annexation, there's been quite a few in the last couple of years, mainly on the Conti Road, Van Duzen Road area. So, we look at it, if it benefits the city, and we think it's something, as I said, if in the future will really help the city, we bring it in. The nice thing about most of that property, it's all vacant land, and that's the best that you can kind of bring in when you're talking about annexation. We've had several others that want to come into the city, single-family homes, apartment, all of those things that are already pre-done really do drain services, so we're very cautious about that. The last one that we really did was Stewart Manor, you know, what's it called, 197?
Top.
Was it?
Stewart Tower.
No, they've been in there, with the apartment, oh, Summerland.
Summer.
Summerland Apartments overall, Bowie Road. That was a development that actually wanted to come in about two and a half years, three years ago, and they were upfront, they said we want the police protection, and that's what we're seeing a lot, because the county is so overwhelmed, and we've seen a lot of that, and that was the last really complex, and actually it's been cleaned up very well, there were some issues, some drug issues, and a couple other problems they were having, the police department is where we worked with the community, actually cleaned it up. When we talk about annexation or development, just a couple of things, we have a piece that's called West Side, that's over on the Conti Road area, it backs up to 95, that was just brought in a couple months ago. That is a development called Strip Matter Property, they've been in Laurel for a long time. The developer is going to build a pretty much some townhomes, do some commercial development. We've required them, it backs up to 95, to do a mid-rise, high-rise, mid-rise, and we are trying to work on banquet facilities and things like that. There are a lot of things where you can go and rent, you know, the firehouse, the American Legion, smaller facilities, but there's really no place that we know of that people can come in, perform weddings, have receptions, all of those things, so we're trying to work in that direction. So that development is still being, it is still in the pipeline, but the build-out is probably three to four years on that as we move forward. The old Laurel Police Department, those may remember, the police department moved over to the old Baptist church. I think it's worked out very well for us, and the actual, I guess the first part of the church, sanctuary, thank you, I should have said something, the sanctuary. If you haven't been in there, please see the chief, we'll be more than glad to give people a tour, especially those that worship in the church. But the operation of the police department is in the three level there, when you first go in off of Fifth Street, and then the sanctuary itself is now a community hall, it's worked out very well. It's got a small kitchen in the back, and it's set up for emergencies if there's evacuations. Police Department uses it almost daily for training and other programs, so it has really worked out well, unless you're from the Laurel area, you almost really can't tell that it was a church years ago, so it was a very good investment for the city and First Baptist, you guys, I think, made up, moved as well, and been able to grow, so it gives us enough flexibility as well. With that said, the old police department, the 350 Municipal Square, that is a property we sold, we worked with a developer, we required them, we pretty much told them what we wanted to see down in that area. We are gearing that towards the Mark Station because it's so close. What we're seeing is people that are in Baltimore or Washington kind of move out of those areas because it's so costly, and we're seeing in Laurel, other areas, people starting to relocate, and in some cases, business relocating. That will be about 137 units, we're gearing it towards a young professional, those that will, you know, get on the train, they'll walk to the train, the cars, all of that really they won't need, so it's all self-supported there. We are working on that, we sold the properties, a couple issues that the city's working on, but they are moving forward to group out of, they did some work on Main Street before, but most of it is coming out of San Francisco, and it should be a really nice development.
Mayor?
Yes?
I know this is a larger issue question, but is there ever any hope of having more, I know it's Conrail, more trains out of Laurel area at different times of the day? Since we don't seem to be destined for Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a big supporter of that. My issue, I kind of be very cautious, I turn stuff over to Donna, most, I work for Maryland Transit, MTA, so there's a conflict that I need to be very cautious. I'm okay answering, I agree, the problem, when I used to go down to Washington from here, you can get down there, but you got to wait until three or four, you know, so there are some issues, it's very costly, with my understanding. I think Senator Rosenpepp has got a committee that he's been working on as well to try to utilize the trains more. Everybody's talking about transit-oriented development, that's nice, but if we don't have the movement of the trains and those schedules, it's not going to work.
Exactly, more people would move out here if we did.
Yeah, it's not going to work, so it is, I think Mary's coming through the door, our county councilwoman, Mary Lehman, for those. So yes, it is something we're looking at.
C X S controls the tracks, and their primary purpose is to move freight, and they act as if the Mark trains, passenger trains, are a guest on the tracks, so there's a lot of talk, a lot of discussion, particularly as the big cities move to the middle, to either do a third rail where there would not be that competition, or to see if somehow they could work that out, but the issue is going to be.
Oh, yeah. So we have expressed our views, we have, okay, you all, Jim's, you and Fred, Donna and Fred are both on Jim's committee, they've been working again with this, I can tell you, the state is still very, we talked about budget and funding is very tight, but we support that, I think it makes good sense for the city. We have also talked about making sure that people can get from Laurel or this area region to the airport without having to, you know, drive a car, so that's going to be very crucial. Route One on the Howard County side is talking about a development that is going to be massive, and as most know, Route One can only take so much traffic. As those people that always tell me they don't want any traffic on Route One, I remind them their tax rate will go way up, because if we don't keep people, bringing people into the city to spend money and those types of things, it's not, you know, it's a fine line for us, quite frankly. The Mark Station, I will touch base, as I told you, I don't get involved with this, I can tell you that Mark Station is being worked on with the city as a partner with Donna and the administration, Kristy and Marty, and our planning and zoning, as well as the developer. The developer, the state put out the contract on what they want to see there. This is the same group, Patriot Group, that is over on Bowie Road side that I'll talk about, that's doing the development. This is a transit-oriented development that is going to be put down there, it'll be a commercial, mixed use, there'll be commercial on the bottom, there'll be parking in the middle, and then they're talking for, is it four-story or five?
Four, want to be five.
Four stories, it wants to be five, that will have to be, you know, go through our planning and zoning, they'll have to go through our historical district commission as well as our planning commission. So that is, that is again, something that we feel will really help us with Main Street as well. Unit-wise, anybody got a number? About 300 units, somewhere in there. Yeah, my point to you all is, as we prepare, you need to prepare, because those souls that you'll need to take care of are coming to Laurel eventually, so. That again is about a three, three to four-year build-out time and all. The big one is Laurel Mall, which is now the town center, that is moving very well, that has been a long overdue process, while Mary's sitting here, I want to thank Mary for all her support. Our county executive has been very supportive, and we couldn't have made this happen without their help and their support, quite frankly. They are moving, both decks are down, I think the back deck's got a little bit more, the decks are down, parking decks, they're actually already inside the building, taken care of and starting to, you know, there was some asbestos that they had to move and a couple other things, so that is being done. We believe within the next week or so, couple of weeks, what did you tell me yesterday, two weeks?
Maybe next.
Next week, you may start seeing where the old J.C. Penney side, I still call it, will come down. That L has to be taken down, because they need to clear that, get it ready, they need to build a new Burlington store, which moves Burlington to that, to be able to take the other section, the old Montgomery Wards, take all that down. They're on a very tight schedule, we have an opportunity to have a Harris Teeter grocery store, be the first one in Prince George's County. For those that may shop there, I started shopping there since I figured they were coming soon, and a little pricey for me, but it's okay. But it is a very nice store, you know, like I said, I jokingly visited several of them, and I think it says a lot that they're coming to Laurel and they're going to come to Prince George County, because again, I think the stigma of that Prince George's County under the previous administration was some concerns, people backed away, and I think with Resherne and his integrity, Mary and the council has set a new tone and direction, and we're hearing that, we're seeing that. So that is moving forward, they're talking about spring of 2014, that will hopefully open, hopefully sooner. Brian Givens, Greenberg Givens, they're the ones that have done the town center in Annapolis, Owings Mills, several others. I can only say that Brian Givens is a breath of fresh air, we were dealing with developers, and they're still involved with it out of California, Samara, and out of Boston, which is AEW, which is an investment firm, so there's not an interest, there's not a community interest, and they tried, but Brian Givens is a class act, his integrity is, I just can't tell you, when he tells you he's going to do something, he does it, and if we had more developers like him, we wouldn't have the problems that we're having. He cares about the community, Friday nights they will do things to get the community involved as well, when they open up, they do that now at some of their centers. He's 15 minutes away from Laurel, he knows the community, and he cares about it, and as he said, 15 minutes away, you know where I live, I don't produce, and he's come a long way. So I'd like to tell you about the stores, we're just not able to do that, that is, you know, I can tell you, Harris Teeter, Regal Theaters, going to be the first, you know, theater that they've done in this area in almost 10 years, a lot of new technology. The president came from Tennessee to talk at the groundbreaking, and just a very nice individual and committed to this project, so for the city, that's good, we get amusement tax, those types of things, all the tickets sold, and, you know, I think the theaters are starting to come back when they, when they talk about the stadium type of seating and the things that they do now, so we're real, real happy, and I'm hopeful in the next several months that they're able to come out with more of what's happening here. I think people are going to be very, very happy, very pleased with what they see. Anderson's Corner, which is at Conti and Van Duzen Road, Anderson's Corner, just for those that may not know, former council member and Peggy Anderson, longtime community member who passed away a few years ago, that is named after Peggy Anderson, they call it Anderson's Corner, and they are working on a development which is across the street from the hospitals, that vacant piece of property, they're going to do a mixed-use development there, project. We are talking to them, and they're the giants here from the hospital, you know, I'm hopeful that they have some dialogue, I think there's an opportunity as the hospital grows to allow this corner, maybe there's some opportunity for doctors' offices and others, but, you know, they have it set up doing a commercial, some commercials, well as residential and other things, but we're continuing to talk with them, again, it'll be a nice project, and we're talking probably about a five-year build-out, from start to finish. Hawthorne Place has been around for a couple of years, several years, until everything started going south. Bowie Road, where the railroad tracks are, the old trucking company, that whole piece of property is going to be redeveloped, same group, Patriot Group, they are moving, at one time they were going to do a high-rise and some mid-rises and a couple of things, they've changed, you know, the marketing and some things have changed, so they're looking at, you know, a reduction in the amount of density, so we are continuing to work with them, they're working on financing. A lot of the developments are still having issues with the banks and getting construction financing. It has all changed since the, you know, several years ago when everything went south. So they are working, continuing on their financing, they're working with Prince George County, I know Mary's met with them several times as well. We're hopeful they get started, and we think that whole area with their build, as well as the new town center, that is called City Center, that will all change, you know, throughout many years, and we envision that as a walkable community where you'll actually, in some cases, you'd be able to work there, you'd be able to reside there, you'll walk to get your groceries, you'll go to the movies, all of that, that entire area is what we're calling the city center. And again, that is almost, you know, one time, and I think it's still correct, about a 20-year build-out for them, so we're hopeful they get the funding and they continue to move forward. That's just, and then we're doing some infield, Main Street was still working very hard on, we have a grant program. One of the things that we still have a concern over is the, to try to get some restaurants on Main Street, is the liquor issue, that I know we work with the association. Ms. Crook, Louanne Crook, and Kim Ral, who's with the council's office, who's with my office, both of them, we save a lot of money, we don't pay high-paid lobbyists, they're city employees, they go down for the 90-day session for us, they have been for many years, they have brought back a lot of money to the city, quite frankly, working with our delegation, our senators, senator, and our delegates, and it's worked out very well for us, they'll, they will again go down, we are going to probably ask them to put some type of bill in that relieves us, whether it's the bill that was put in last year that failed, or couldn't get out of somebody's desk drawer, or we were even thinking maybe what we do is change where it is now 500 feet to a church, maybe we ask them to look at that, and we kind of go maybe 200, 300 from a church, those types of things. We're still talking internally, it might be a little bit easier, and again, I think the clergy association would very vote, I know Kevin in particular was down there in Annapolis. When we deal with liquor down in Annapolis is very tough, and the liquor lobby in particular is very hard to deal with, they don't, they see things certain ways, I think they would probably support something like this, because they see it, you know, moving forward, but there are a lot of groups that are in Annapolis that, you know, it's easier said than done, I guess is my point, and they'll be down there, we'll be down there, we meet with our delegation, I think in two weeks, a week or so, to talk about what we're looking for in Annapolis this year as they go to the 90-day session in January. But that may be some of the compromise we're looking at, just so you know, and are aware of it. Just a quick, off the record comment, does anybody really care if a liquor store that, or a restaurant that serves liquor next door, I mean, I think it's the dumbest rule that law.
I just oppose the karaoke on Christmas Eve at 11:00. It interferes with the sound system.
So there's no, no big app, I mean, it's.
No, we've called everybody, there's, we've gone on record as saying we want the bar next door, because that's fertile ground, basically, right? It's just not a problem, and the liquor people, if they would get their, well, anyway, if they would get their act together, this is expanding their territory, so they shouldn't be with us.
Yeah, I may have missed, but we had another issue where they were, I may be confusing, we were trying to get specialty stores, and the liquor, they don't like it when they do the liquor and all, I may be confusing, but that's what Louanne and Kim do, they keep us all straight, and they make sure that they look out for municipal government and work with Maryland Municipal League in Annapolis, so.
The bill failed last year because one of the delegates wanted to incorporate this change with a larger set of, a much bigger agenda.
Why are you doing it for Laurel, you're not doing it for the rest of it? Some of them.
And other stuff.
Right, and some of them understand the economic development issue, and there's others that just don't want to deal with liquor, and they want to leave it alone, and, you know, there are ministers in Annapolis that are legislators, I think there's at least one or two, that can sometimes get vote on some issues, so we may, we may call on you all, we may ask for you to do letters of support if you would, but as we move forward on this, we'll kind of keep.
Just for you all to know, we have churches, I'm looking at pastors of them right now, who are stuck, and until we get this passed, they can't move where they need to move, and you just told us there's going to be hundreds of new residents, these new churches need a place to meet, so we've got to get this fixed.
One thing that we have to deal with, and we brought this to, I guess, the leadership when we met of the clergy association, there are, I get a lot of churches that want to come in and come to the city, I'm fine with that, but there are zoning regulations and some issues that we have to deal with, there's, we need to make sure the community is okay with certain things if someone's going to move next door. What we're finding out is there are some properties that are renting to churches that may have five to 10, 15, you know, members. Our concern is they're in violation, we're not going after the church, we're going after the property, and I think we cleaned a lot of things up, and there were some issues regarding that. No one in the room, there are, respectfully, there are some fly-by-night individuals that I've had the opportunity to sit down with, that are, say they're ministers, and have this flock that they need to bring in, and when they, when they come in, we're finding out there's a lot of other things that are being done, and I just want to be upfront, we can't do that, we can't have that, we're not anti-church here in the city of Laurel, we believe in churches in our community, but when they're in violation, we will work with them, but if they're fly-by-night, we're going to have to try to move them along and find them the proper place. We still think there's an opportunity for, we just went through some property, actually the other day, on a tour, I still think there's an opportunity for the city to work with clergy association, and those where the smaller congregations that just need a room this size, maybe a smaller room, we would like to work with a developer of creating a community room that allows the smaller churches to meet and do those types of things, and again, we did some touring the other day on a building that has some potential, I just don't, before I could say, and it makes a good idea, I need to check the zoning and all those other things, we need to make sure parking is still there and those types of things, but it's been an idea on the table for the city for a long time, we just haven't been able to entice the developer, again, it's costly for them, we understand that, but if we can help bring. Again, it's costly for them, we understand that, but if we can help bring several of the smaller churches, the property in the city of Laurel, when I meet with ministers from outside the area, I, it's unbelievable that price on a property. Everybody thinks their property is worth a million dollars, two million dollars. That just isn't the case, especially when you want to just knock the thing down and restart and start over, so.
Especially if the government's going to buy it.
Yeah. So those are some of the issues that we're dealing with, but I wanted to at least, and if you have people that, or other congregations that you know of or, or having some issues, we want to get them in compliance and we want to work with them. And I know that commitment has been made by Kevin and others within the clergy association. The, I just, real briefly, I'm going to go over a couple of other things and that is during a time of emergency, during the last storm of snowstorms, pretty much the city, Marty Fleming who deals with, preparedness for all of the city for us, will open up our EOC, which is in the back, our Emergency Operations Center, brings all of our departments together, other agencies. That most of the time is always open depending on the magnitude of the storm. When we open that, 99% of the time, our 725-5300 number will be answered by a human being, whether the city's closed or open. One of the things that we've learned is people in time with me do not want to hear a recording. They want a human voice. They want to know, get an answer. We've done that all along, we'll continue to do that. We encourage you, for those that live in the city of, and we get, actually during the big snowstorm, we were getting people who called us from Dayton, Charles County and a couple of others, I thought, asking for, we had no idea how they got our number, but they were way out of Prince George County, several of them. But people couldn't get through to places that they needed to talk to and find out answers. So that number will always be up and running most of the time. If you check our website, if you follow us on Facebook or Twitter, those types of things are out. If you're a city resident, we have the reverse 911 system. Everybody knows what they are. We just got a bunch of railroad calls about the election. We stayed away from that actually during that time with the storm, but we have that system that will call people in certain areas and tell them their stories or what we're, what we're doing. But Marty and, and the city forces really do a great job of, of keeping streets open, helping people and assisting. So that number, I wanted to make sure you all were aware of. Saturday, November the 24th, want to remind you, it's Small Business Saturday. We again encourage you and encourage you to remind your congregations that September the 24th, we'd like for them to shop local every day, but the 24th has been recognized as Small Business Day and we encourage you to shop local. Our numbers on crime continue to go down. We still have a lot of the small things where, you know, people bust into cars because they see GPS. We're seeing some strong-arm robberies, that case, you've still seen, still seeing a few things where people are out. And, but ultimately, or I should say, our, our numbers continue to, to go down. We can't do that just with the police department. That's where you guys come into play as well. It's important again, as you come together in your congregations, to remind those adults as well as kids to work with our police department to turn in, provide information that may help us solve cases. And that's not just here in the city, that's in the county as well. You know, we kind of get, you know, crime knows no boundaries. So there, there are issues that go over in Howard County and end up over Laurel. So there's information always and that, we just again, want to remind you, the police department, Chief McLaughlin and his command staff and officers are always willing to come out, talk, provide safety tips. There's a couple of programs that they'll be working on that we hope to reach out to the community as well as to let you all know, to, so that people understand what the police department does. And Pastor in particular, you know, Spanish community as well, we continue to try to reach out and help. We thank you for your support and, and the others. So we want people to understand that police department's there to, to help. For the black churches of those large congregations, you know, we know there's some disagreements at times. We again encourage you to, to your congregation, we will come out, mayor and council will come out, but the police department in particular will come out to your programs and talk as well. It's important for them to re, to reach out. We had some issues within the police department. I think there were, we had some issue over at one of the local bars. As I've said all along, let's just wait, it's under investigation. I think I'm pleased with what I know the case, it's not what everybody has put out there, that we were smacking people, hitting people while they were handcuffed. That's not how we operate and I will tolerate, tolerate that neither will achieve. But one of the things that I learned by not putting our message out and getting out in front of this is I allowed people to turn this and blanket the entire police department. That's not the case. So we are working, we have worked with the NAACP, the local chapter in the NAACP. We've worked before with the ACLU. We are working, talked with Justice Farm and some things. So we, we are open, we take this as a challenge and we continue to reach out to the community and work with everyone. The color of their skin or what language they speak to, and their gender, doesn't matter to me or the police department. We're there to assist and we're there to help, quite frankly. And we encourage you, if you see issues or you know things, call the chief in particular, call me, and we'll pass that information on as well. But crime reduction and prevention, we can't do alone. We need you and we need the community to be involved and engaged.
Can you take a question?
Yes.
Jack Cavanaugh at the Howard County Detention Center says that 80% of the incarcerated individuals there are there for drug and alcohol-related crime. So it might be reported as an assault or something else, but there's drug or alcohol issues involved. And I work closely with drug and alcohol addicted people in the city of Laurel, trying to make change, but it seems like that's an area of our city that's broken right now. Access to good withdrawal detox programs, you know, the kind of counseling resources that are critical and they're just missing, it's a critically missing piece in our city. And I wonder if there could be better synergy to restore something like that, like police, the hospital, the mayor's office and churches. That would go a long way and seem to me reducing some of the petty stuff or the vice crimes or whatever.
Any comments?
I don't, I don't know that that's factual, that's factual within the city. There is a lot of intervention as far as drug and alcohol rehabilitation. We have a lot of council, a lot of council centers, we have a lot of education centers, we have government clinics, we have all kinds of different avenues within the city that we're aware of. We work well with the hospital as far as emergency psychiatric practitioners, a lot of those are drug-related and the root of it is drug, is drug addiction. The other thing is, is a lot of what the crime that we are currently seeing, and I'm not going to say that the root may be somehow attributed to alcohol and drugs, but a lot of ours are financially based. You know, we're having the copper thefts, we're having the quick, the quick steal, taking upon it, taking and selling, survival. You know, the shoplifting cases where you would have people go in and steal $1,000 worth of meat is now they're stealing tuna fish to feed their children. So it's, it's more of a survival nuisance-type crime, and, and excuse the terminology of nuisance-type crime, but it's more property than it is person's crimes. So I, I'm not going to say that drugs aren't an issue. We do have, we do have drug issue. Most of ours is the PCP that we're seeing today is much more intense than what, what I dealt with in the eighties and nineties. So that's, that's obviously causing a huge impact on us as well as the hospital because with the, with the PCP that we're seeing, the only way that it is treatable is by a clinical intervention as far as the hospital. So that's, that's overwhelming them as well as us. And what should take one or two people is now taking four, five officers because of the, the magnitude of the, the drug.
And, you know, I did forget, I apologize, the cable is taping this for their shows and they'll cut the pace up, so. Just now that we said, I'm okay, we're fine. I told you no, nothing, no foul language will come from this guy. And thank you. And again, I encourage you to talk to chief offline as well and, you know, we, we are seeing some, don't get us wrong, there is some drug issues here.
I mean, honestly, though, we drive people to Howard County to detox, so.
I, I was just going to say, part of our issue that we've always dealt with is that Laurel carries this, this big area. Well, and again, as you heard the chief, we concentrate on the city and the boundaries sometimes are fragmented, so we catch, you know, when somebody, I hate listening to the news and they say it happened in Laurel, what's happening in Howard County, Laurel or those types of things. So I might encourage you to talk to chief offline. Again, we'll, we'll have more discussion. The, let me just give you a couple of dates. The city's going to be closed on Veterans Day, November 12th, next Monday. That council member, that council meeting has been moved to Wednesday, the 14th, at 7:00 PM due to that holiday. As I told you, November 22nd is Laurel's Turkey Trot. The City of Laurel Holiday Parade, the celebration, tree lighting is on December the 8th, starting at 4:30 this year. The city council meeting will be, we have another city council meeting on November the 26th. And we encourage you, more than welcome to attend those meetings as well. December the 5th is our work session and, um, December the 20, I'm sorry, December the 5th is our work session and when's the last, our last council meeting is December the 10th of the year. Because the 24th is a, is Christmas Eve and the city's announced this and the city employees are going to be happy. On the 24th and on the 35th, the city's going to end up being closed, those two days as well. I've learned in the state of Raleigh, there's not much that goes on during those down times. Also, I, I did start a new program, it's called My Time with the, with the mayor. It's another avenue to try to reach out to the community. It's one-on-one with citizens that come in. That last one for the year will be on December the 10th. And we did them at different times because of the people's schedule. It starts at 4:30 and it will end at 6:30. And that is being held at the Facilities Maintenance Building. There are parking racks divisions on Sandy Spring Road, right up the street next to the Exxon Building. So again, if you have something or anyone in your congregation, please let them know, they're more than welcome. Just to finish up, the, as I said, we are on Facebook, we're on Twitter. We sent out numerous press releases. We are going to seg around, I think we did these before. This is a contact sheet, but it also allows us to know what resources you may have. Marty is able to use that, the city. We're getting ready to meet with, a lot of the churches are doing outreach and assisting people with helping to get jobs, doing out applications, those things. We met, the city was, went to a dedication over, still call it the old Arbitron Building, over on Marshall Avenue about two months ago, along with all the executives where they, the state has opened a resource center for jobs. You go and fill out applications, learn, share information. I happened to meet the individual that was, helped put that together and told him, you know, I said, we have a lot of churches that kind of do the same thing, that reach out to the community. It would be beneficial if we could sit down and talk. That meeting is going to be, I think in two weeks, we're going to talk to this individual about things that may be available to you all. The other thing I think, as we've always said, is.
No, no, we do it.
Yeah. So the other thing that I think would be beneficial is the resources, I know at the city level dry up at times. We need to all start sharing those resources and working together. And I'm hopeful as this individual comes in, if there's funding or grants and those types of things, we may be able to pull some of these churches together, create a, a block of, you know, as again, community space where it's all being done. I, I understand everybody's doing programs, but the more we can help and advertise and if we can help other churches or the community with these resources, we think it'll be beneficial. There's also phone numbers on here. We'd ask, Lucy can hand this out? If you can fill them out today, great. If you want to take it with you and send them back, but we like to keep our, yeah, Marty?
Mayor, related to that, just an FYI, we are preparing to submit to the city council our comprehensive review of the city's emergency operating plan. One of the new annexes in the plan is a faith-based annex. Once we get the plan through the review process and adopted by the council, we would like to extend an invitation to the, to all the clergy to sit down with us. Our, our goal here is to create formal relationships with the faith-based operations in and around the city. We know through our relationship with, and we have an informal relationship at the moment with Bethany Community Church, that the resources that, that are available through faith-based organizations are astronomical. Currently, we rely on Bethany to provide employees with crisis counseling as well as citizens who have gone through it from that. It's worked out very well for us. And as the mayor had mentioned, you know, there, there are resource, resources that are available on both sides. And we would like to enter into formal agreements with the faith-based organizations to establish a relationship where we can share resources and not have to worry about things like insurance lineups. So if you're interested in participating in this effort, if you could see me before you leave, I'd like to get your contact information. We'll be setting this up sometime in the new year.
Would that include the utilization of buildings?
Absolutely.
In a disaster? Because we were with our buildings and, and, you know, didn't have a clue what was going on.
Absolutely. That would certainly cover that. And coordination is, is, as you're well aware, a big thing, so I think this is a step in the right direction to build a relationship.
Back up to the jobs thing just for a minute. So two-thirds of us in the room know, the clergy association is, is now giving birth to the newest 501(c)(3) called New Day. And so this year with the community shelter that's happening, there's going to be daytime programming at Pastor Beckford's church right down near the end of Main Street, three days a week. And one of the programs that will be offered there is called Jobs for Life, which is really sort of a character-based thing because a lot of people who don't have jobs, don't know they should come on time and don't, I mean, there's lots of sort of basic stuff. And so Pastor Jeremy and Pastor Cliff are really going to run that thing and we're very excited about.
I'm hopeful that we get some good information from this individual. I think there's some things we should tap into, so. And, you know, I'm sorry, I think there were a couple of new ministers that came into the room. Would you introduce yourself, title?
I'm Andrew Best and I pastor worship both churches on Monday and Saturday.
Anybody else?
Connie Miller, Holy Trinity up on Sandy Spring.
Just bear with me, we're getting close. Again, I just want to emphasize the Twitter in particular for definitely during times of emergency, we're, we're using that more. As I said, if you don't know about Twitter, one of the things we've talked about internally is to try to get the community together, talk about how you set up Twitter, how you use it. Those things, we're doing that because we called Mary Lehman one day and she said, I don't know how to use it.
I don't, I don't, I admit it.
She's got it mapped out, she just doesn't know it.
I don't, I don't know how to use it.
But we think that's important because, you know, again, as the community's following along, it's a good way to get out information. You can, I, I have one set up, I'm not as good as Peedy Tweety back there. Mine is Laurel Mayor. We're capturing, Valerie has one, Valerie Nicholas has one, and there are some others. The city of Laurel has one, Marty will have one. We're working internally on how many we're going to get out and how to follow it. We know that the council's working on trying to get information out and push information as well. And we'll continue to do email, we'll continue to use the phone. Laurel is at that, that mark where, you know, my mother and father are 80-some years old, they don't tweet, they don't Facebook, he don't hardly use a telephone, but he knows how to use a telephone and he likes, my dad worked for the Post. He still wants the hard copy of the Post. So it's crucial for the city to get information out, not only electronically, but also hard copies, different languages, all of those things. And again, we, we can reach out and I think we have talked to you all before, we know on Sunday, information is passed out. We would again attempt to work with you all and maybe put the flyers in something on Sundays or whenever you meet to get that information out as well.
I, I think one of the things that may not be really important to the clergy, but I think your idea on the tax break for the houses that have been foreclosed. think your idea on the tax break for the houses that have been foreclosed on can certainly benefit in the long run for somebody, so I think you ought to at least touch on that.
Yeah, we, we had work session last night. We still have roughly, in the city, I think it's last count, about eighty foreclosures, eighty to a hundred foreclosures, properties that's sitting. We are going to, with the city council's blessing and passing of this, hopefully in a couple of weeks, we are coming out with a tax credit for people that, first-time home buyers, that allows a tax credit of up to thirty-five hundred dollars a year for a certain amount of years. Not a lot of money, but again, we think it may help as we continue to do tax credits, that is on our budget. We may tweak that later. It's something that has never been done in this city, and we're pretty proud of what we're trying to do to get homeownership. You have to live in the home as well, it can't be a rental property. There is a piece in there that if the property is in bad shape, it allows you to come back to the council or maybe adjust that thirty-five hundred. So, we're hopeful that that, as we kick that off, will help. We're gonna meet with the local realtors. If you wanted, I'm glad Eddie brought that up, wanted to point that out to you all as we move forward. We'll make sure that, you know, the press releases and other information, you and the community get that as well. Let me stop for a minute and just say, one of the most important pieces of our community, besides the churches, is our Laurel Hospital. Laurel Regional Hospital is an important part of the community, it's right on our boundaries, we feel that it's, you know, our, our hospital. I wanna ask John Spearman, who is the president and COO of Laurel Regional Hospital, if he'd make a couple comments. I know people in the room were involved with, had a focus group last week that we participated in. I did recommend that he come and meet with members of the clergy as well, which is why we invited him, but I think offline, there's some things that have been done. Laurel Hospital, like a lot of things, has a stigma with it. And, you know, people, word of mouth is the best advertising. Laurel Hospital is a good hospital. I've been there, unfortunately, several times, you know, and had some surgery and other things. They take good care of me. And they didn't take care of me because my parents volunteered, where I have a title of mayor, because nobody knew who I was, till my mother walked in, telling everybody. But, you know, my mother was there two weeks ago, members of your congregation are there. It is a good community hospital. It needs to grow, it needs to be supported by the community, it needs to be supported by the doctors. And I thank John, who I've known for several years, through other, fire and rescue and other things that I've been involved with. When they gave me his name, I was excited. He is a go-getter, he is one that reaches out to the community. He will be involved and engaged in the community, we will have members of this hospital engaged. Fred Smolga is on our council, is the, what do you, president of the board, chairman of the board for the hospital. And so, the city has a vested interest, and economic development is very important for that hospital to succeed and to make sure that it grows and stays with the latest technology in the community. So, I'd ask John if you say some few words, and then you may wanna catch him offline or meet with him and, and others, but, you know, the more we can get out there and talk and, when you all have the fully pulpit on your days when you're talking to your congregation, it's important to put that word out there. They have issues, I got issues, the city's got issues, but it is a good hospital, we need to support that. John?
Thank you. I've been here about four months. Started July second at Laurel. I've been, I'm not from Maryland, I'm actually from Kansas. Then I moved to New York, and I lived in New York City for about eighteen years. Worked at Kings County Hospital, and Emergency Care and so forth in Brooklyn. And I came here. I came here and was vice president of CHOC Karma for about ten years. And then for three years before I took this job, I was the senior vice president for global health initiatives, helping to set up health systems in different parts of the world for the university. So, a lot of people ask me, "So, why are you leaving the university and moving to Laurel?" I've had to explain that over and over again, but during my interviews and any discussions I had with the staff and the board members and so forth, it was pretty clear to me that I thought Laurel was special. And I'm not just saying that, it was a feeling I got both from the staff and from the community about what they felt about Laurel. It was also pretty clear to me that the hospital stumbled somewhat over the last five or six years, and that there were some changes that needed to be made. The reason I actually decided to come was because in all those conversations, it was clear that people inside the hospital recognized that, and that they were looking for leadership to do precisely that. If I had not have felt that, I probably would not have left Maryland. And since I've been here in those four months, it's, that's just been reaffirmed over and over again. So, we're going through a internal process to kind of reset how we operate, how we deliver care. But part of that is also is how we relate to the community and the kind of outreach that we need to do, and kind of loss track of to some degree. I mean, I'm fortunate enough to have Chaplain Curl, who is our lone chaplain, but he has organized, I think, twelve volunteer clerks, including Councilwoman Nichols, who spend quite a bit of time in the hospital, on the floors, and in the emergency department, beginning to give us the connections that we need there. I had the good fortune of having a discussion with Pastor Mayor last week to talk about his take on what needs to be done in this community. And I would love for, to be able to talk to each and every one of you at some point about your view of the hospital, what you expect of that hospital, and what kind of changes we need to make in order to do that. Health care is changing, as you well know, and so Laurel has to change with that. One part of that is beginning to understand what community health means in ways that we have not in the past, and how to reach out and build relationships around all kinds of disease processes, preventative health, et cetera. We have recently, or in the process of applying for Health Enterprise Zone Grant, they're going for, we don't know if we'll get it, but we're, we're making an effort. And those grants are focused around health disparities. The particular one we've chosen is to work with primary care networks in this community about on diabetes. And it's an innovative approach, one I have not done in the past, and I think only a few places in the country have, and that is, how is it that you use Facebook, Twitter, and others to deal with and manage diabetes? And there are some studies that indicate that social groups, social networks like that have an impact on the outcome of trying to deal with diabetes management. So, that's one kind of effort, and one of the ways to begin to reach out to that will be through the faith community, because there are all of you have people in the congregations who suffer from and struggle with, with diabetes. So, we'll see whether or not we get the funding for that. If we don't, it is one of the kind of projects I've told my leadership that I believe we need to find the funding elsewhere, because I think it is something that we're looking for. So, I'm very open to having discussions with you, a couple people on my staff that I've directed to begin doing specific outreach along the camp. So, I'm very open and very proud to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much. Again, before we wrap up, I'm gonna go around the table, so if you have something that you'd like to say, but I'd like that Pastor Mary, if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm gonna switch sides real quick, so I can, I'll have my back to everyone.
So, we're coming around the table, so if you have something, if you'd like, I do, you gotta write it down.
Now, I have a committee meeting in Upper Marlboro, I'm at ten, and I've been fond of reminding my colleagues, I live the furthest away from the county administration building, I don't wanna be the next council member to get a hundred mile an hour speeding ticket on the county level. Two issues that come to mind that would probably be of interest to this group. One, of course, is question seven, which I spoke out forcibly against, did not, did not wanna see this state or this county go in the direction of building its economy, as, as I like to say, based on a house of cards or games of chance, but that's not what the voters decided, unfortunately, on Tuesday. So, and they spoke loud and clear, in fact, it passed by a wider margin in Prince George County. I'm sorry to say that it even did statewide, it was much closer statewide. So, I've already had very brief conversations with the county executive and with a few of my colleagues, namely Councilman Patterson, whose district, Council District Eight, includes National Harbor, and, and his communities in the Oxon Hill area are gonna be hardest hit by, you know, whatever problems arise as a result of gaming, going to National Harbor. And I've assured them, you know, that I will work with them and, you know, to minimize to the degree we can the impact on those neighborhoods, but also to get commitments from, you know, MGM, Caesars, who's ever gonna come in there, to, to put funding, you know, into programs that address addiction and, and all the other problems that are gonna be associated with gaming. It's unfortunate, but we, you know, we're gonna have to find a way to move forward and, you know, and put programs in place and, and have services and, you know, it expands our police force and whatever it takes to, to mitigate, you know, the, any negative effects of, of that operation on the county. One of my other favorite topics is environmental stewardship, and I'm gonna be pushing again in Annapolis for a fee on disposable bags. And what I decided after that measure failing for two years in our delegation, we actually got it out of the House delegation last year, only to have the Standing Committee kill it, because, you know, even though the bill passed the House delegation very narrowly, the leadership of the House delegation didn't like the bill and cautioned the Standing Committee Chair that it would be a big floor fight. So, they went down for the second year in a row. So, this year, I went to some of my colleagues and gentlemen, that some of you know, Craig knows, Howard Stone, who is a longtime resident of the county, former school board member, belongs to one of the larger churches in the county, and I said, "You know, Howard, I really believe that environmental stewardship is a faith issue, you have to take better care of this planet. What would your advice be to me?" Because there are so many very large influential black churches in this county, to get my foot in the door on this issue and make my case, to be able to combat the very strong opposition from the plastics industry, which, you know, was all over the field the last two years, especially last year, and did the robo-calls to their constituents where they, you know, because they have the money to do that, to say, "Can I patch you through directly to your state delegate or your senator and tell them this is gonna hurt you financially?" And, you know, people bought into that. And anyway, so Howard said, "Well, the best thing you can do is go address a group called the Collective Empowerment Group." Do any of you all belong to that group? Okay, well, I will be at the December meeting. First of all, I got a meeting with Anthony Macklin, who is the head of the sanctuary. And he, you know, after five minutes, I'm five minutes into my spiel of why this matters, showing him pictures, I said, "You know, the lowest-income communities are hit the hardest by, by trash, and it affects their quality of life, it has that ripple effect of, the police call it the broken window effect, right, Rich? At first, there's a broken window, then people view that neighborhood as, as a place to commit crime, and, you know, everything from there goes downhill. And low-income communities are disproportionately affected by, you know, pollution, trash, environmental justice-related issues." And so Pastor Macklin stops me like five minutes in, "Okay, you, you don't have to say anymore." He's like, "This is a no-brainer." I had pictures of, you know, bags clogging, you know, roadsides, and the Adacusha River, and he said, "You know, what do I need to do?" And I said, "You know, get me an audience with your, with your larger group." And, and so, and he asked for donations of bags, 'cause my office, if any of you all need bags for, and it's a standing offer, I have at any given time probably two to three thousand reusable bags in my office to be given away to food pantries for Thanksgivings coming up. If you do food basket or other programs, instead of giving people a basket, I'd be happy to provide you with a case of a hundred or two hundred bags. Put the food in there, and mine are the really heavy-duty, you know, this is our second and third shipment since I've been in office. We have the real heavy-duty ones that are oversized and could hold like two gallons of milk or, you know, whatever people need. We provided them to Laurel's last year. So, happy to do that, you can follow up with my office. But so Pastor Macklin asked for some bags, 'cause they do an outreach program at the sanctuary every Saturday in November. They go around in the Capitol Heights community, and they got food door-to-door, canned food. So, I said, "You know, I'm happy to do that." But at the Collective Empowerment Group's December meeting, I'm gonna be going and making my pitch and asking, you know, for help on this issue. Help them to educate, you know, their, their congregations on why this is important, why it matters to them. It's, you know, yeah, people call it a tax, but you can avoid it if you bring your own bag to the store. It's the right thing to do, it's the direction, all these jurisdictions around us are going in, and it, and it just makes sense. So, I obviously feel strongly about that issue. And the city's been, been supportive, Fred, you know, very supportive with the Maryland Municipal League PG-CMA, and I really am hopeful that it's gonna pass this year. We have a new chair of the Prince George's delegation, Jolene Ivy, she's very supportive of it, and we're about to get two new delegates. We've gotten one new delegate who is replacing a delegate, Tiffany Austin, who had to leave office, she was against the, the bag fee, and her replacement is in favor of it. But more importantly, probably, 'cause we have the votes, and we would have the votes again, but just really narrowly. You need, in, in our House delegation, we have twenty-three members, so we needed twelve votes to get out of the delegation. We got exactly twelve votes, which is what allowed the previous leader to go to the Standing Committee Chair and say, "This is divisive, you don't wanna touch this issue." And I've already talked with Delegate Ivy, and she said, "You know, I'm totally in favor of this, and you're not gonna have me going to the Standing Committee Chair, you know, encouraging a no vote, that's just not gonna happen." So, we are optimistic, but it's gonna take education and outreach, and for people to understand, you know, why this matters, how they really can make a difference. I do a lot of my shopping in Burtonsville, only because I live right where Howard, Montgomery, and Prince George's come together, so I shop at the Giant in Burtonsville. Everyone going into that store is bringing their own bag. Why? Because they don't wanna pay a nickel to Montgomery County for the plastic bag. And it's, it's, it's just the right thing, it's the smart thing, and people of all ages, you know, black, white, you know, older shoppers, young, you know, you see them with an arm full of bags. They just, all we're talking about is, you know, changing people's habits. It doesn't have to cost them anything. That's all I can think of right now. And I'm glad you brought up the, one second, Fred, I'm glad you brought up the Employment Center, because my office did not literally know about it till the day before. Sometimes the county executive gets, you know, gets overly enthusiastic about things in his office, and I, us, him and his people from time to time, they forget to tell council members when there's an event in their district, that the county executive's coming too. So, my office found out, I think, the day before, we really didn't know anything about this. It's state-funded, and it's meant to be a regional center. I think we have to come up with ways to make the best use of it, especially in this economy, do the partnering that Craig talked about with the faith-based community, because I know a lot of you do like resume-writing workshops, and, you know, you're trying to help people get job training and get back into the workforce. We should really take advantage of this and maybe do some satellite, maybe they take, you know, one day a month, they take their program out of the old Arbitron Building and take it to, you know, one of your, one of your congregations. I think there are all kinds of possibilities there, so thank you for bringing that up. I haven't even been able to see the center myself. Did you go?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm anxious to see it. I had a staff member that went, so it was, it was really impressive. But we don't want that to be Laurel's best kept secret. And, you know, I hope, I've talked to Kevin about some of these ideas, that the great thing about Laurel being at, at the nexus of four counties is, there are so many possibilities, I think, for cooperative arrangements with the four counties, with the state of Maryland. Kevin, at a meeting at his church a month or two ago, we talked about, even in these tight fiscal times, at the end of the day, it makes more sense for maybe the state of Maryland to have some kind of social services center that serves the four-county area, so that people, instead of falling through that increasingly, you know, thin safety net, that it's got all the, the holes, especially when you live at the edge of a jurisdiction, it is harder for people, all of us in this four-county area, to get to Rockville, to get to Eloquent City, to get to Annapolis, to get to Upper Marlboro, all of our county seats, not only because they're a long ways away, you know, distance-wise, but because there's no public transportation where we live. There are very little. It's, I tell the story of the meeting we had at Bethany back in the spring or the summer, Kevin, to talk about your, your very, the difficult case of this, you know, very severely mentally ill woman that the church was trying to help. We had a guy come, who's worked for the county for- We had a guy come who's worked for the county for 20, 25 years, for the Department of Social Services. He lives in Bladensburg. He had car trouble that morning. He was determined to get to this meeting. It took him two and a half hours on three or four buses from Bladensburg to get to Laurel, and even then he only got to Main Street. He called and said, "How far am I now from Bethany? Can I walk?" I said, "No, that's not a good idea. We'll get somebody to give you a ride." Because that's as close as he could get to Bethany out on Brooklyn Bridge Road. So if you don't have transportation in this part of the state, you're in trouble. Literally could take you half a day or more to get, whether it's to get social services, to go for a job interview, and all those kinds of things. So we need to turn that challenge of being a multi-county, multi-jurisdictional area into, I think, an opportunity and advantage where we can serve multiple populations, multiple purposes. Any one or two quick questions? Anything for county-based, Upper Marlboro? No?
I'd just be interested in knowing who we can put pressure on if they're going to, if we had to have the gambling bill passed, that we can get it to education.
Get what? I'm sorry.
Get the money to education. That doesn't have to be discussed right now.
Well, yeah.
I just want to throw it out.
That's a question for Annapolis, and anybody in Annapolis that's candid will tell you it would require a constitutional amendment. They're not going to do that. It's going to go into the general fund, which is why I said to people, however you feel about gaming, if you think some money's better than no money, we need the revenue, which is a candid disagreement I have with the county executive. When he was in the General Assembly, he was opposed to gaming, but he said, "We need the revenue. We need the revenue." Okay, I get that argument, I agree, I don't think we need that kind of revenue, but it definitely will not, it will not, there will be no net gain for education. Whatever money comes in, if that goes to education, it'll be substitute money, and then that money will go somewhere else. It's been, it's happened over and over again in other states. It's happened with the lottery. So there's just, that's what bothers me about it. It was disingenuous to say, "It's going to go to schools." And it is what it is. Unfortunately, that's politics and, you know.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your great work. Food giveaways, contact my office if you need any help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We're going to move quickly, and I'm going to start with Cat, we'll go right around and end with Marty. Cat, anything to order?
Just the New Day thing, it really is happening. In fact, a bunch of us are meeting at Bethany today at 11:00 to put the details together, so please stay in touch.
The only thing we're doing currently is, we have a gymnasium, a large facility. We are working to get it authorized as an official shelter, which we're always kind of step-chegering South Laurel, but still, with things like this last hurricane, we wanted to do whatever's necessary, whatever we have to do to qualify to have a shelter there.
If you need help, I'm sure Marty can help you, give you names and numbers.
Great.
We've had to do that, so please.
Thank you for the meeting today.
Absolutely, thank you for coming.
I just want to say thank you to the Mayor and Council. After meeting, we're going to do 13 years because of your bill that passed, and now meeting over here on West Street. And also want to thank the police chief, when we had our community day, he came out over 150-foot back. Police Department didn't know he was coming, but they showed up and helped out and played with the kids, and they had a wonderful time. That was very, very, very good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the invitation. I'm new to the area, I've only been here about a year and a half at Resurrection, but very much willing to help out in any way, either through the Clergy Association, any ways that our parish can help and get more involved with the local community and the local pastors, or very much, and the government, we're very much willing to help out in any way we can.
Let me jump out of the bag and then we'll come back.
Not really, just want to say thanks for our time for the meeting.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for hosting this. Holy Trinity's got an issue with the street being county and the property being city.
You got issues, you ought to see my issues with it.
And we went through Mary's office, and we're right back to square one. And I'm just not really sure where to go with that, except that that continues to be for us an issue because we can't get a sidewalk there until we resolve that, and that is a safety issue for our community, with the number of people who go up and down that section of the street to come to this, because of transportation, who are coming here to this bus stop, people in wheelchairs, people with strollers, and we're very concerned about that, and we don't know where to go now.
Let me, I'm going to take Marty by surprise, call Hyphen, tell him, "Let's cut a deal, let's do something."
They said we don't have storm drainage, so we can't.
I'm not sure I got the money to do it, which is why I can't commit to it, but we'll work with the county. I mean, it's, I haven't been able to be aware of it. Marty's got to give a report with them, or at least ask, I mean, if there's something we can do. I just don't know, money-wise, what are we telling them, you know?
Well, it would only make sense for drainage issues, because we have to put current gutter in to support the sidewalk, so.
Oh, 15, 20 grand?
Oh, easy.
See, and that's the issue.
But we will call them.
Somebody's going to get hurt.
Okay. Come in. Thank you.
Just to say thank you, and St. Phillips will be having its annual community Thanksgiving dinner from noon to 3:00 on Thanksgiving Day with the works, and anybody is welcome. And on a personal note, my gratitude to both the Police Department and the Fire Department, because I had a tree, a tree met my front porch roof last Monday night, and both the Fire Department and the Police Department were there within minutes. And the Fire Department cut the section of the tree in front of my front door because I couldn't get off the front porch in case of emergency, and they were fabulous.
Good.
And they're driving rain, they got you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the meeting. As a new church in the Laurel area, I have hope now of finding a home, possibly because of these policies.
Thank you.
Thank you for the meeting. Hope you want everybody to get it on.
Thank you again for the meeting. Chick-fil-A has partnered with us to support our homeless endeavors with New Day, raising some funds. So on next Wednesday night, any and everyone, go to Chick-fil-A and let them know that the church sent you.
All Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, the Conti Road, Conti Road.
Thank you for the meeting. I work very closely with the homeless people in Laurel, so I see a different city. It's a little darker.
Absolutely.
And I look forward to working with community leaders and partners in the future of what we can do to help that other side of our city.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the meeting, and thank you for all that you do, and all of our elected officials. We just pray in praise.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
John?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
I just want to thank you all for being here. Mary asked me to pass on to you quickly that there's a committee meeting regarding the redevelopment of the Lord Library. There has been a decision made to keep it at one story. There's some other issues. Our architectural design has been decided upon, and things are moving forward there. But I just want to thank you all for being here this morning, and hope that our relationship will build and continue with the city and the church.
Just a couple things. Thank you all for being here. I know I had this conversation with Reverend Terry, who was yesterday. What I'm finding is being very active in the community, in my chaplain capacity, but just as a private citizen and helping people, when we get a call from someone in the community that may need services, what I'm finding in New Life, the churches that I go to, we've got families that are going from church to church and getting aid. And I just think that there should be some sort of database that we could have, like on a computer, shared drive, that when someone comes to your church for service, their name is entered into a pool. Because I know this one particular family was able to get quite a bit of money from our church, and I understand that they went to another church with the same story. So I just think that there should be more of a better tracking system into just kind of keeping up with the services that we're providing. The second thing is, I was listening to you just a minute about the diabetes thing, and I was a diabetes educator in the government, and I think that that's good, the services you're providing. I know in my chaplain duties, I talk to a lot of people that are dealing with diabetes, and they often ask about information or having resources, and I have packets of things that I personally give out. So I think in that direction of being, educating people on that is very good.
Thank you.
We'll talk more.
Okay, thank you for the invitation. I would invite all of the clergy to contact me if they'd be interested in being an on-call volunteer chaplain. And you can apply online under laurelregional.org, and go to the careers, job, employment, volunteering is down at the bottom, because it's alphabetical. But also, we have on Thursday mornings at 7:30 to 8 o'clock, we have a community prayer time in the chapel that you're invited to if you'd like to come pray with us.
Great, thank you. Pastor?
Thank you for your time, for the invitation. My concern, I feel everybody's concerned about question seven, how we as a pastor of a church, to lead, to react, to act, because we don't want to re-mean, but it's something that's hurting the family, it's not the society.
I mean, I think it's important when you have the opportunity in front of your congregations to say just what you said, and say you are concerned. What affects a family affects the church, what affects the local government, in our case, because again, there's not a lot of social services that the city does because it's done at county levels, those types of things. And the people have spoken, whether you were for it or against it, I think all we can continue to do is remind and educate, and again, reach out wherever we can to say, "If your friend is out there gambling away their heating money to pay for their heating bill, that's not the right way to go." And again, I think you're the best ones, in my view, that can talk to people one-on-one, families one-on-one, and again, continue to send that message.
Mayor, there's a Gamblers Anonymous that meets at Holy Trinity weekly.
Oh, okay.
Folks ought to be aware of that, if that, if someone comes to them, that's been a longstanding group, and it's at least there available, people who've walked a mile in that place, probably are the best able to support and encourage.
More work for us, more work for the.
We have to let you. Absolutely. Anything else?
Thank you. I just want to thank you on behalf of First Baptist for a good invite, and two things I would mention, we are continuing to be pretty strong with our ESL program, and so that's just, we just want the whole community to know that we're really open to helping anybody with those issues. We have morning classes and evening classes. I think it's Tuesday and Friday mornings, and then Wednesday nights, and probably have about 30 volunteers in our church that truly weekly work that program. So if there's a need with anybody in the community, First Baptist is attempting to address that. And also, I've been working pretty closely with the winter shelter coming up, and I've been trying to work on the schedule of that. So I'll just mention here that we have our church and Jeremy's Church of Coventry, and maybe some others in this category, are willing to open their facilities for extra time. They just would like churches to partner with us to cover those weeks. So we're doing our own week, but we're also opening our facility for another week. So if that is something that you might be interested in taking, just one of those days in that week would be helpful. So we're kind of stretching out a little bit. Jeremy's taking the second week to do the same thing. So if you cannot take a whole week for a shelter, or you don't have the facilities where you could do it, but you have a group that would come into our church or his church to help, then get in touch with the Clergy Association or me to let us know that you're interested in helping.
Sure, thank you.
Would you be open to a business sponsoring an item coming in?
I'd be, anybody who covers it.
Okay, because I know businesses now are doing volunteer work and looking for places where, as a group, they can come in and volunteer. Okay.
Great. Betty?
I just want to thank everyone for coming. I think this shows that we are a real close-knit community, and I think that we can work together to solve a lot of problems that other communities can't solve. So again, I thank you for your support.
Chief?
Good morning. On behalf of men and women of Laurel Police Department, thank you for your continued support, your referrals. I've hired actually three or four people based on clergy referrals, and they've been outstanding officers, so they're actually multitasking. The other thing is, is we are very committed to community outreach. Anything that we can do to assist you, your clergy, any special programs that you have, we are more than willing to participate and assist as long as the manpower permits. The final thing that I'd like to say is, I am always available. You are free to contact me, my number is 301-498-0092, or I can be reached, if you go to our website, there's an email link that will contact. Thank you again for your support, and please continue dialing.
The other thing the chief does is coffee with the chief, and I would encourage him, probably maybe to set up some coffee, some of the clergy that are here as well.
Christian?
We just formed a citizens, a chief's citizens advisory committee, which is basically, for lack of a better description, a neighborhood-wide community outreach program on steroids. And what it does is it helps me to identify the problem areas in specific wards, it's ward-specific, and we come back, we discuss different solutions, possible remedies, and take it out to the community and bring the community issues in as an isolated group. So there's several openings on Ward Two. Ward One right now is full. We actually have our first meeting, the other day, it's a very, very diverse group of people. It's new blood, and I'm very enthusiastic about. I think this is going to work well for us as a community.
Chris?
We are available to you at any time. If something comes to mind after hours, we have voicemail, we have email, something you can reach us on our website through the main switchboard, but please contact us, we love your assistance too.
Marty?
Just a reminder, if you're interested in working with us, with our emergency managers on the faith base, annex of our emergency operating PIO, if you want to know, we would love it if you do. Also, we are working with our PIO, preparing to launch a new initiative to spark renewed interest in community emergency responders. So if you have anybody in your congregation that's interested in serving as a, serving with our emergency responders, please let my office know, we're going to bring to you perpetration, and we need their help.
A cert program that Marty and I run is a great program to get people involved, and I know has been involved several churches in doing this as well, so talk to Marty a little bit afterwards.
Pete, anything?
Good morning. If you go to Twitter, make sure to push your pictures already on the site. I guess in my previous role, if I was standing in front of your church or your business, I was talking about holy smoke. But now my role has expanded here, so I look forward to working with everybody. And, yeah, I found me to do it big time in Laurel, but I look forward to working with everybody.
Katie, anything? Katie? So anything, anything?
Let me, again, thank everybody, we wish you all the happy holidays. I'm glad we got together, I think it's beneficial, we'll reexamine, and as I said, the chief will be reaching out as well to do some things. I can't say enough for the support that we get from many of you all throughout, and it does mean a lot, because again, government can't do it all, the churches can't do it all, requires a partnership, and that's very important. That's it, I'd like to ask Kevin if he'd do that addiction.
The mayor whispered in my ear that Kay Wright wants her son, so we're going to pray for her. And we're just going to pray for her, and we'll pray for these guys who we pray for all the time. But let me just thank you for these leaders that you've blessed our city with. We thank you for their faithfulness to sit through hours and hours of meetings on our behalf and to make decisions that are often very hard. So God, thank you for their courage and just their willingness to serve. We pray for the mayor and the council, that you would bless them for that. We pray that you would give them wisdom and ability to decide based on how it is. God, we know that you're the God of all comfort and the Father of mercy, and so we pray for K. Wright, because she has served our city for so many years. We pray that you would just comfort her as only you can. God, you can give a pieces beyond our ability to understand, we pray that for K. Wright. And we just lift one another up to you now, and pray Jesus precious them.
Thank you all again.
I want to question.
Thank you.
Content, I'll be filled right next to you.
Can I have a filled next to you?